To order at seven PM, seven oh four PM. Ask everybody please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever changing.
This is all.
All right, yes. Fisher, yes. Here, Hubbard, here. Michelle.
Yes.
Kio.
Here.
Keating. And B.
Yeah, so Cousins and Keating did both notify us that they weren't going to be here. Okay, thank you. And see as approval of the meeting minutes from our work session on July twenty fifth, along with our city council meeting on July twenty sixth, twenty twenty two. Your motion to approve both sets of minutes.
There's some adjustments in there. Two, 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 my, your, your heads for reading and found some stuff.
So somebody could include that in the motion.
I move to approve both sets of minutes with the adjustments that were made in this supplemental.
Second.
Second by Fisher. Wolf, a, for the comments. Alan?
Yeah, okay.
Other confirmation. Okay, it's called a vote to approve those two minutes.
All right, yes. Hubbard, yes. Griffin, yes. Fisher, yes. Michelle.
Yes.
Kio.
Yes. Thank you, motion carries. We have no free or any participation. So we're down to AFE, which is approval of the agenda.
I mean, if you do the agenda after that, unless there's, unless the sudden no baggage does, there's something.
Motion by Fisher. Set up by Griffin, thank you both. Any discussion on the agenda? So you know, please call the vote to approve the agenda.
Fisher, yes. All right, yeah. Michelle.
Yes.
Griffin, yes. Hubbard, yes. Kio.
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. Are there any declarations of, of, of interest?
Zach, my employer is named in the payments, so I'm not going to be able to have a consent.
Thank you. There are the page two of the agenda, or we adopt a public hearing, so we have two of them this evening. The first is a public hearing to consider the industrial facilities tax exemption submitted or request submitted by Variety Die in Stanton. So I will open the public hearing, see if there's any public comment, close the public hearing. If there's no public hearing, I'll allow Michelle to give a brief overview of what it is as part of the hearing, because we get that in the record. It's okay. Once we come out of the public hearing, then we are into a consideration of. So with that, I'll open the public hearing at seven oh eight PM. And I will ask, is there anyone online that would like to speak as part of the public hearing for the Riley Die and Stanton tax exemption request? The hands, start lines. Open someone, don't affect anyone in the audience that wants to speak on this topic? Okay, so no public comment. Three, so Michelle, you just give a brief overview.
Okay. So Variety Die, a longtime company with the city of Dexter, they actually started in Dexter in nineteen fifty four. They are doing their, I think this is their fifth edition, and they requested a fifty percent abatement of taxes on the one point nine four seven million dollar real property improvement investment that they're making, we asked for a twelve year period. The, the request for for this real property improvement is at their location in two, 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 one Bishop's Circle West, and it's in association with the construction of the twelve thousand one hundred three square foot addition that they received approval for last year. And you'll recall that the state allows the company to go back no more than six months after the issuance of a building permit to come back and ask for an abatement. And they're within that period, as you can see in the packet, there's a building permit. Excuse me. The application does identify that there are a hundred and ten jobs that are being retained and eighteen new jobs that will be created as a result of this investment. Like I said, this is a company that has started in the city of Dexter and has grown with the city of Dexter. It started, I wish I could remember the address, it was on Broad Street. I think three, one, one, five, but don't, yeah. And as we, they grew, we grew, and the industrial park was created, and they moved out to the industrial park. So, and since then, which was early nineties, they've had the five additions this. Would you like me to continue here, Kio?
I think that's sufficient to give the public an idea of what's going on. So seeing no further comments, we'll close the public hearing portion of this at seven eleven. Thank you, Michelle, for your update on that.
The chapter resolution, according to the packet, approving a request for Riley Die and saving company for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate for investments in no property located at twenty two, twenty one Bishop's Circle East for a period that took six, nine years.
Motion by Fisher, is your second?
I saw.
Okay, discussion, Zach.
First, I want to point out in the first paragraph that we should strike virtual meeting, virtual meeting, just regular, regular meeting. And what'll disappoint the applicants aren't here, I did have a couple of questions.
That's my bad, I neglected to remind them that they would be coming, or that today was the date, so that's.
Well, try to do your best, and of the eighteen new employees, do we know how many of them we expect to be Dexter City employees?
No.
Is there a timeline when they have said they were going to have those good jobs?
They have to have them within two years.
Okay, can we report that back to us? Great, and if they don't make the eighteen new jobs?
So they can, they can have, they can make a written request to you for extended period of time, it's entirely within your purview whether to grant it or not. If you do not grant it, then there's, it's part of the law.
Okay. One of the things I'd like to ask the applicants is, by my math, this will take away roughly sixty four thousand dollars from Dexter Community Schools, and they, over the last two years, lost two hundred students throughout the system, which, if you do the math, it's about two hundred thousand dollars per, so I always like to ask them what they would do to make the schools whole, donate money to the DCS or something, so please pass it along, and I hope they would. And then, one last question for dummies like me, folks who may be new to this, the one point nine million dollars that the requesting abatement for does not match the estimated cost of construction, which they provided to the Washoe County folks, right? Can you explain how, why they're different?
Absolutely. So, the, the cost for construction for the building permit is your utilities, your shelter, your building, it does not include all of the fixtures or the little finish work that you have. The tax abatement encompasses everything, so from the chairs that people will sit in to the desks that they're going to use, and the, the construction portion of the building permit doesn't take any of that into consideration.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Yeah. I think we last saw this in November, maybe for approving the preliminary site plan. In terms of, and then I think there were conditions on that. I mean, is this, are they done with this, and, and were all these conditions met?
They have not completed construction, they're still in construction, and they had to complete their conditions of approval as it came to the site plan to provide a revised site plan that addressed those conditions. Any condition that was partly physical improvement that they have to do, whether it's landscaping, paving, et cetera, there are rotations on the plane that go along with those conditions.
That's why they're all ready to be us.
Zach, what number did you say the school's home for you?
Seven thousand over ninety, so each year.
Okay, I was reading the table wrong, I guess. It's actually more than that, I think.
Yeah, that, I didn't very well.
What?
I'm going to say something, it says twelve years, and first, they requested twelve, but the last page of this particular item is the evaluation that, that takes them through, and they qualify for.
Okay, any further discussion on this? I always look at this as very positive, saying, oh, we're doing an abatement, but if they don't make the investment, we don't get the additional taxes that are on top line of that table. At the end of the day, we need businesses like this in the community, so obviously having to grow, so. You want them to invest here, as opposed to going somewhere else to invest.
And by law, we do inform all of the testing jurisdictions, they get certified letter, letting them know that this is committed, and the public hearing will be, and have contact with the city, i.e. if they have any questions. Did not hear from any of the test institutions.
Yeah, I want to call the vote to approve the industrial facilities tax exemptions, we're going to write that, please.
Hubbard, yes. Fisher, yes. All right, yes. Griffin, yes. Michelle.
Yes.
Kio.
Yes.
Thank you all very much, and that would be the the points that were made, and the decision made. Thank you.
Thank you. Item G two is our second public hearing. Consider amendment to our city council compensation ordinance. So I meant to open the public hearing at seven seventeen. Now, ask online, is there anyone online that is present to speak as part of the public hearing, related to the city council compensation ordinance amendment? So please raise your hand, and or, it's starting, if you're calling in. Seeing no hands raised there, we'll go to the audience here at thirty five fifteen. Anyone want to speak as part of this? Public hearing? Okay, seeing none, just to fill the time between opening and closing. The proposed change is essentially increasing city council's pay from eighty dollars per meeting to ninety dollars per meeting. So six hundred of the council increases to ten dollars per meeting. And we, we set the public hearing back on July eleven, so. I will come out of the public hearing. It's a no comment, total, general statement at seven eighteen.
And I can make a motion.
Okay.
To consider the amendment and increase council pay from eighty to ninety.
Is there a second? Maybe, maybe more. Second. I'm sorry, very much. Any discussion on this? Yes, sir.
It does kind of feel gross raising our own pay, but when you look at how long it's been since it's been done, and you compare us to other communities, we're we're way behind, and part of our goal is looking at the long term, and this ensures that more people can participate in here, so it's kind of gross, but it's also kind of good. I just wanted to articulate that, if you're feeling, you know.
No comments? Okay, again, if you call the vote to approve the amendment to the compensation ordinance, please.
All right, yes. Hubbard, yes. Michelle.
Yes.
Griffin. Yes. Fisher, yes. Kio.
Yes. Thank you, motion carries. Complete both of our public hearings, we're bound to nonarranged participation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Yes, please. Just state your name and address for the record.
I apologize, that's two, seven, three, two, one, four, four.
Three, two, one. Three, two, one.
Three, two, one, four. Yeah, four, four, thank you. Sorry. The mileage is definitely about the cost. It's a very easy product to do, if it was free, you'd say, yep. We say it's ten mils to do it, there's going to be a lot of resistance. There's some number in between there, that's going to improve, and some number that's not. While it appears from the discussion that councilperson Griffin and Michelle's are fairly certain, it sounds like the rest of you may not be certain. Appreciate the fact that you're thinking about that, literally, this is not a moderation, I was posed the exact same question, what would you do? Would you build on existing site and renovate, or would you build on the new site? And I paused for a minute, and I thought, I don't know. And I think probably most people would say that as well, because we're trying to figure it out. I don't think having two sites is ambiguous, I think it's actually very simple. I think people can understand that both of those things are possible. I do think that a twelve million dollar project is a little bit on the trip side. For instance, Reno Township, that's in your back, it's nine, it's a twelve and a half million dollar project. That's a township of twenty thousand people, thirty six square miles. Cannot understand, nor if I was sitting in your seats, could I justify to one of our residents how it is that our city with a fifth of the population and a year, eighteen of the square area could possibly meet the same, so, just, it just doesn't even fall into the realm of common sense. It, it's not even plausible, it's literally unscalable. There was, you did have some discussion about township coordination, there's always been a back and forth with townships about, even about public safety. Great example is we went through police services, you know, at the time it was, three were coming from Dexter, three were coming from Dexter Township, two were coming from Webster. We went through and ran out all the information, third of the runs were to Webster, third of the runs were to Dexter, and third of the runs were to Dexter Township. It's always been that way, that there's a imbalance. As far as working on I understand, talking to a fire chief about what is needed in a fire station. You have to remember, fire chief is like a CEO, he's running the station. He's not the CEO, he's not the CEO. You all are the CEOs and CFO of the city of Dexter. You guys have to make decisions, you guys have to decide what the trade off is, what the running line is, again, it's back to cost. One other, a couple of other comments, there was a comment that never be cheaper than is today to build. Actually, in two thousand six, seven, we were looking at a lot of projects in the city, we ended up budgeting for them, and we ended up going forward in the two thousand eight to two thousand ten timeframe, they were significantly less. We actually were amazed at the time, and we're scrambling to figure out how we can spend more money at that time, because they're coming even cheaper than we expected. So, while it is a comment, it does happen, it's not a never. Also, there was a comment about buying real estate from Councilwoman Michelle.
Michelle.
Michelle. I would be very much interested, actually, real estate's an excellent hedge, so I would advise you financially, if you have it, hold it, not sell. And lastly, on tax abatement for the, that was just asked, I think you'd probably be better to express that, it's less than six hundred dollars a month for the schools rather than sixty two thousand dollars. Thanks for. Thank you for your comments this evening. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Okay, we're down to section high on the agenda is communications, is that meeting calendar or upcoming meeting list, because we have listed there. Are there any comments on the meeting calendar? Zach?
Captain Art, it's noted there is meeting here, our regular meeting space, it's still nervous about COVID, and so which is nice for us, less nice for folks on the western side.
So you have the meeting.
Yeah. And we do have a city employee on that, that sits in the department board, so he did about.
Do you have comments on the meetings? Okay. We move to our, this evening, from the public services superintendent, Tim, thanks for waiting. Good evening.
Evening, everybody, good night.
Good.
Good, are we? So, obviously, we have to report, I was off this week, so I apologize, I couldn't answer my questions, or two weeks ago, sorry. But is there questions on the permit? As we're now, I can't.
I have a couple of things. First of all, thank you for getting the limbs out from under the walkway over to the connector.
Yes.
I know that was a couple of weeks ago, we were here to hear him say it, so I want to thank you for your work on that.
That's cool.
But no, it's great, takes the pressure off there, the water flows much better, so. Looks like we lost a tree over on the pathway.
Lost a couple of trees, it looks like the last week.
Okay, during the storms?
Yes.
You guys made quick work of cleaning them up.
Yeah, they did a good job, so, and in fact, they've been a little short handed too over the last couple of days, and they did really well.
Okay, just turn it all into wood chips, I assume?
Excuse you.
Just turn it all into wood chips, I suppose?
Most of it, yeah.
Okay.
Some bigger stuff they had inside.
And one tree, did, did, it got a panel on the board a lot.
Yeah.
Um, pretty good sized tree.
Yeah.
It was a good tree.
But, it's something like the metal part, you know, was bent and broken and busted, but the wood post that supported it were solid.
Um, what are we doing along Second Street in the area where we're trying to grow grass? Are we cutting that, or will we be cutting that?
That's something that I'm going to be discussing with Chris tomorrow, we got dirt and brob eating tomorrow, we want to discuss this, because I got to find out as far as the contract, where, where we stay in versus where contractors stand. They already cut it once, and then had put some, started fertilizer down, or started seed down back again, because there is a lot of crabgrass, so I got to get home first tomorrow and find out exactly what we're saying. And actually, Kurt and I talked about that literally as I was wrapping up today.
Well, the, the, one of the hardest things on any project is getting turf established in the summer, right? Right, and that's where we started, and that's where we're at, but I, I think, I think at a minimum, if we're helping our, our slap on the hands and stuff relative to grass cutting, we got to mow, if, if that's still under our jurisdiction, because it's a project?
Yeah.
Then I'd have the guys mow it and address with more seed and fertilizer, or whatever you want to do to get it going, but at least have it look maintained.
And that's exactly what Kurt and I, that's actually talked about, exactly what you just said.
Okay.
And we have an ordinance out there, not an ordinance, we're, we're, we're making people, you know, cut their own grass, and you're, you know, they have crabgrass, everything else.
And you're going to be receiving that in fall, and that probably is
Yeah, see, it's going to be
How to do it, the grass is in the areas of where water runs and carries the seed into this tournament, so.
Well, and, and they, they didn't hydroseed initially.
Well, you know, my point is, it breaks down, and the, the seed runs off, and then, you know, you just got to keep redoing what you're doing.
Yeah, it's, obviously, it's got to be addressed, and Kurt and I said we'll talk about this tomorrow, I think that's exactly what we're doing.
Okay, good.
So, I'm just surprised that the residents haven't cut the grass, but I don't have to wait for us, that's why we're talking about.
Yeah, it looks like a couple have, and most are letting us figure out what to do, the rest, it's very long, it's all.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update about the spill into the year of the year, I think that was helpful. I know, I have been for some time, I'm at the city of Ann Arbor, updates, but they, they've sent a few out already, I don't know how you guys want to coordinate, if we're looking out to the news agency, if you feel like we need to be doing any more updating, or if it's no news, it's good news kind of a thing, I don't know if we have a communication strategy around that or not.
So, we talked about it, actually, I talked about Avangria and a couple of the predators that are shot. Just because of the distance, and hydraulic leaving versus where, how far it's going to travel, and all the water and everything else that's going through, by the time you get to here, I mean, it might be miniscule, I mean, obviously, the eagle is spending on it all time testing at different various spots. I know, and I was obviously worried, because they had full treatment, it comes straight from them, but they do have full treatment, so, you know, they have stuff put in place for stuff like this. But, no, I'm going to monitor it, I'm going to get hold of Eagle and find out exactly how far along the river they are, you know, and then see if they might have some type of time period where they, it actually might be a chance of actually getting down towards us. So, we, I mean, we don't get it out of the river anyways, obviously, we have wells, so we're not as concerned about that, but we do discharge.
Does that ever get into the groundwater, I mean, this is my ignorance about how that all water works, does, like, do our river water ever get into them?
I couldn't say that for sure, I don't want to tell you something misleading.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sure any of the waters could get into the groundwater, how deep they can go, I, I don't think it'd be that deep, I mean, we've got wells that are hundred fifty two, hundred fifty feet, you know, so that's pretty deep.
And one, and, and I think the soil probably does a really good job of filtering. But I, I did just get news that the city of Ann Arbor is considering a lawsuit against the company. And I don't know what the damages they're, they're claiming on, but.
Well, they're going to have chemicals involved, these more probably just, you know, potentially as a hazard, and this company's done it before, my understanding, so, they need to have a comment.
There was a there was a woman in her hideout outside of the company earlier, like, like last week, with a sign that was like hung for the Huron River, so she's like protesting, and I'm like, it's a good thing, it's a good thing I can't drive, because I'd be right there, no, she's in front of the building, on the street.
That's, that's a good idea, because like I said, this is the second, like.
Yeah.
So, and this is not a good one.
Yeah, at this time of year, I think it's more about the exposure of people who are in the water.
Right, and I talked to
Relative to us.
That's, so the, I, I mean, I looked it up because I am who I am, and where they tell you not to be in it right now is eleven river miles upstream of Hudson Mills, so they're watching. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. And I talked to, actually, I talked, reached out and talked to the assistant director over in Milford for the public service the other day, and they had to go over and close anywhere that they could possibly, people could get into the river, and close all of it off, and they got Milford members this week, and so.
That's, I think, the hard part of this, is that so many people enter the Huron River at so many different locations, and the fact that it's moving, obviously, upstream and downstream, you know, you have to almost have a daily update on, here's where it is, and you're going to go into water, don't, you know.
My understanding is that they're closing off everywhere, I mean, I, like I said, I personally haven't gone out there and seen it, but I know I was through Milford the other day, you see where they, they, they closed everywhere they are.
Yeah, and, 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 you did hear much about communication strategy, my thought is that, as it works its way here, if eagle issues they do not touch, or, or, you know, the, the next segment above us, then we start with the communication of, all right, it's reached this point, chances are we're next, you know, that's a cool consideration. But I helped to, my comment earlier about Ann Arbor, I'm bringing the lawsuit, I also got an email last night or this morning, asking if Dexter was wanting to join in with Ann Arbor on their lawsuit, and I did, I did respond, I was going to talk to Stan and see what his thoughts were. Kind of what his thoughts were. Didn't make any sense for us to. We saw, you know, there wouldn't be any potential. Cause of action for us to do so.
How's our little third street project?
Well, that's, so I was gonna say, we still have progress, we need tomorrow, we run into some. Some problems, so with stuff that wasn't supposed to be there, they had to move some storm bite, they had changed. Type of bike, just to be able to, you know, get things around, other things. I was hoping they'd work today, but they didn't. So they worked on Saturday, if I don't know, where that, so tomorrow I'll get a better update, I'm gonna extend.
But generally, the storm source is in front over there.
Yep, so it comes down to, yeah, down, it's actually up front. Both across the street and back, how they're working the way out. And the guy, it looks like they've got a baseball ground as far as. We're looking stuff towards Central Street. So. Someone was asking about the broken duck wrapper. I did talk to Kurt about it, so they're, they're not sure if they're gonna get a duck, so to speak, so to speak, but they're gonna try to get another one in there.
Parks had talked about this expression swing, there's some special swings that parks that they donated, and so we're thinking about placing that next to the current swing bay there, and then moving the rockers further. So I don't know if storage allows, or what the timing will think is, if it makes sense to hold on on installation, on a replacement rocker. Again, I don't know if Justin's gonna speak more to that, but we'll give the timing of the additional swing, and then moving those rockers needs to longest to you, I don't know.
No, that's fine. I had read that they, you, somebody had asked them to. Check and see what we stood, and he said that they were replacing something, anything specific. So, but I'll find out more about this one then.
Thank you very good for your work, and your good report.
Thank you.
Next up is our committee development manager, Michelle, welcome back to voting.
Thank you very much, House Counsel this evening.
Good.
Excellent. Okay, so you've got, excuse me. My two-week report in front of you, and before I go into any updates, do you have any questions for me?
The thirty-one sixty-five Baker Road project, since there was a pre-op meeting, or there will. And what is that subject to in terms of the process, like planning commission?
Yes, it'll be a planning commission, city council, because it will require full site plan review, whether it's going to need any type of special land use, or if it's going to come in as a P U B. Don't know those two things yet. But it is, as you can see from the. Concept that's in the packet, they are looking at a. It looks like all residential, although they did say in their. Email to me that it was a mixed-use product. So I'm interested to hear more of it on Thursday. It will be nice to have that vacant lot there. Find something developed there, so I'm looking forward to seeing where this is gonna go.
So does that meet or not meet the correct zoning?
I have not looked at it from, as far as the residential, it's a central business district. Central Business District does require. Retail office commercial and first floor with residential above. Could they have one building that's facing Baker with the retail commercial on the first residential above, and the rest of the buildings, and that be all residential? Yeah, they could have that. The. I haven't looked at it from setbacks and things like that, central business district doesn't have. For side, your yard type setbacks, so from a use standpoint, but that's I can tell you right now, is it good. When you get the news on ordinance update adapted. I believe that you can have. Just the multiple family without necessarily the retail. But I'm still waiting my way through all of the form-based code, so.
This, that address is right on the corner?
No, this is the one that is next to Veripose and the chiropractor office, so you're about four lots down. Great.
The vacant, the vacant one?
The vacant one, yeah. That's a great dovetail into my, into my update. So I spoke with Margaret Sessions, she's the postmistress at the post office. And we've known for a long time what she told me, which is that they are really crammed for space, they've outgrown it. And she, she made me ask if there were any buildings or land available. Excuse me, for a new location for the post office. They need approximately a minimum of thirty-five members where the, they have a minimum of fifteen postal vehicles that have to be. Secured on-site when not to use. Not to mention the customer base that we're becoming, so I have already reached out to one property owner. And, and talking to them, I will reach out to another tomorrow, and there's a third one that I would like to reach out to, but he doesn't talk to me, so I probably will be asking for. Post office doesn't build new post offices, but what they do do is work with builders. They build the station for the, the post office, and it's a lifetime lease situation, so. They'll recoup their money that way over the long haul, so. We'll see where this goes. I've always said, I did not want to lose the post office out of downtown, how many times have you heard me say that? But we could be looking at a situation where we could use the post office altogether, so Michelle will put her own personal desires aside and work to find a way to keep the post office here in the city.
And what about the Dexter Crossing Plaza, is that in option?
That is in option. As would be across the street, the property is, and Jonah.
Oh, my gosh, is, yeah, is big enough?
There's, if you, right, there's a larger area to the side. That probably could, could be looked at. That, there, and then there's the one other option.
And the, the outlet, Dexter Crossing, for some time now, I think that's been listed as for sale.
Yep, that, that would be where. You've got two outlets, and depending on how the layout would go, it would. If it goes there, would probably take up those two spaces.
And that's just, because that's the new owners, right?
Yep, Carnegie Companies.
What is that name again?
Carnegie Companies. We'll see where this, where this goes.
What's that, did it say their backline?
Government, I expect it runs very slowly, but. Once we get the name, and the sessions is working to get us that, who's the contact that we have to. Not we, I won't be contacting them, but the property owners that are interested in moving forward and engaging, we'll get them contact information. And then just provide whatever assistance we can, process and procedures, and, and keep up to date.
From the, from the proposal, or from the. Discussion with the postmaster, it sounds like the process is, companies have to submit proposals to the federal government.
So finding that right person and portal will be important. And speaking of zoning ordinance update, the public hearing will be the sixth. We sent out over seven hundred letters letting people know what. Ordinance is happening, if your property's changing, when it's changing too. Some were really basic, easy-form letters, others were a little more involved, so that people had an understanding of what's changing, why it's changing. This change will not lessen anybody's ability to do what they're currently doing on their property. So we're not taking anyone from commercial zoning only to residential, and then it was a down zone. That's something you really don't wanna do, so. Excuse me, right now, what we're working on is getting the ordinance online so that people can, can, because they're already asking to be able to see it. And getting the zoning ordinance, or zoning map, final, so I can give that. Any questions on the zoning? Is anybody wanting to physical hard copy that, or do you all, you probably don't. Other than that, I'll make sure you get electronic copies.
It's there anyway, so we have the letters that I don't think we're planning in another separate public meeting. Besides the public hearing.
Correct.
So I think. What I find frustrating in the public hearing process is that it's not an opportunity for discussion. You know, residents come and say their piece, and usually just directly engage with the person. Uh, this is at the planning commission. We mean that. I don't know if there would be value to, from say, like six to seven at night, companies like General TMA. I think. And that, you know, before the public hearing, I don't know if that would be a good way to do it, but just an opportunity for, in a larger forum, if you have a question.
We could do that, we do have eight hours of collateral ordinance that they still owe us for consultation. So whether we did an hour before the public hearing, for anybody that wanted to come in and out and have questions, or somebody who's scheduled a time to talk. We can set that up and maybe work out of the office to. In addition to any. One-on-one that Grayson and I can provide.
It's really up to. Mr. State and Matt, the chair, and they can, and they can indeed. And they had the public hearing for the. What we do on, where we have to. Vacation out by others.
Oh, yes.
Down here on the street.
Yeah.
When those folks came and presented, there was questions back and forth, and then we subsequently, when the public stood up and. While they all supported it. There was any follow-up question, it can be done if the chair wants to do it.
I can reach out and see what he wants, but I can also. Arrange for an hour before. Having humidity, so that people. Can attend if they'd like.
Yeah, I think, I think, just on public hearing, I think that the intent of it is to make sure people are aware. How, how it's conducted, I think, has a lot of freedom. I mean, it's a comment. Just wanted to, for folks who don't know, Super Poodles from the staff are that communicating those letters, they're not actually required, because this isn't a zoning ordinance, so we could just adopt it. And it's very exhaustive to do all those letters for Oxford County, when I help them do two thousand five hundred letters. They didn't have an option, they hadn't, but it, thank you to the staff and give them a pat of mic, that's, that's a lot of my trouble.
Yeah, what, what's going on with the planning commission and requested, we have the parking at the brewery or not? So they are. They are in an abeyance right now, well, they're holding off, they're waiting to see what the planning commission does with the ordinance update. Giving them the time to finish that out. Planning Commission has incorporated clearer standards on wavey parking. When the, what are the criteria for that? It's not a mandatory, it's not that they're required, and there are. Standards for them to look at, is it, is it a safe walk? Is it a year-round walk? Is it within five minutes as a normal person walks, so. In the back of their mind. They know that this is a development that will come back, and if there's no guarantee, they will waive anything more than they did. But at least it's clear, and it also, in doing all of this, they also. Baked in certain. Certain factors that they can ask an applicant to demonstrate, or ask them for. Like you would in traffic study. Maybe you have a parking Milwaukee study. And instead of staff. Providing mapping to show if something's within a five-minute walk, it's uncommon. Thank you. I think that's it, I think it was, last time I was here, I mentioned, there's a new business going in at seven ninety-fourty Ann Arbor Street, that's next to Fillmore. It's Angel Whisper Spiritual Spa. They should be open before. Extra days. We have. Another business that just submitted for a change of tenant at eight oh oh seven Main Street, that's the old reader building, at the very end, it is a. Creative Curios, I think is, is. She, she sells and does workshops showing people how to rehave everything from furniture to. McNex, so she's very passionate about what she does, I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing how that goes. That's it, any other questions, Molly?
Good work, thanks very much. Bolted all the way down too, I forgot to see an entry report.
So you have my report. Just a couple of items, last couple of weeks have been very action-heavy. But the honest election went well. We're ready to get to county around ten o'clock, I believe, once. Third in the county, as far as the municipalities vote, and get our stuff submitted, which is, is pretty good. We just got notice today from the governor's office that our ballot language that we submitted was approved for the charter amendment for November. We had a meeting with the contractor for this building, Axiom, and. They're still giving me a revised schedule after the, now that they've completed the foundation work. But it, it may be that we have to vacate this building potentially at the end of the month. It's not gonna be a very long period of time, but they're, they're planning on moving very quickly, but that's complete. So I thought, as soon as they get in here, get stuff done, the better. But it, it will impact council, or any boards and committees, we'll let you know as soon as we can. I'm hoping here in the next couple of days, they'll give you that revised schedule. And then the last thing is, I didn't, it was included in the packet, but just a reminder that next week is paint dexter. So that's, that's gonna be the, the rest of this week, getting ready for that, but. All the council are invited to attend the. Artist reception, which is Tuesday night at Phelan's, that's August sixteenth, thirty-sixth. So it's a good chance to meet and mingle with. With the artists. And they get into experience of what they're experiencing, and get to know them, and the folks whose eyes we will be seeing the community through. The weekend of the nineteenth of January, so. So do you have any questions?
So I, I shared this with Justin when I voted here.
So I, I shared this with Justin when I voted here last Tuesday. The. Election folks that worked precinct three, which happened to be this end of the willing. Said that this building was by far and away better than. At the Seager Center. They liked the layout of the space, the circulation, the flow, the separation of the two districts. Or the precincts, which I understand precinct one was here, although I wasn't in this room, I didn't even see it. So compliments to how everything was set up and. Now, as a primary lecturer, in case to a, maybe an Adam of everyone, but they, they felt good about the space and set up and flow of people and such, so. I pass that along, our extra spaces.
That's good.
It's really nice. I'm in here, I, I voted here as well. It was really nice to hear precinct one, so. Also, if I could say hey, in Dexter Festival, in person again, very excited about it. For old time's sake, Juan and I are gonna set up the tent on Thursday night. I'm volunteering for it, she only found out at ACH. Yeah, yeah, I did that. Also, the artist party is really fun, if you guys are free, you should totally stop by, it's really, it's, it's really. I don't know the word is. We have all these people from out of town, and it's just a lot of fresh energy and perspectives, and they're really nice people, a lot of the same artists return here every year, so.
It's, it's officially six to eight. A lot of folks hold back out early, so I'd say if you want, if you want to come, I'd get there at eight, six, and like seven thirty.
Yeah, questions for Justin? Okay, I'm moving on to my report. Didn't touch base with both supervisor Hathaway and David Luckman regarding. Our following conversation that we had last meeting. Told both of them that. You know, Syle was interested in having a meeting that we would provide representation for whatever features especially. Follow, Mr. Hathaway indicated that. Syle's board did receive a similar presentation, but they didn't take any action, there was some. Pushback, I guess, from their clerk, who took an immediate position on the project as opposed to just listen. So he's not sure if they. The board want to have the special minister, Luckman's requested or not. So I, so I just want to call Mr. Luckman after that, and I got ahold of him, he's up north, this poor fellow's subject there. I just let him know that we did say we do have a conversation or two, the other community is willing to, but. There's no meeting set up, there's no committee to be formed yet, there's nothing there. So I didn't know that, I know I tried to write it, but it not came across in my writing, so. I am recommending Ms. Deb Schroder from Marquette Gales to be put into the DVA. She's a resident in town and her business owner. That's a good fit. I do have a meeting on Wednesday with Common Sale to talk about the pre-development agreement. We just addressed of that, if you have any comments or. Representation there, Zach and I will both be there. Donna, I'm not sure if you said you could make it or not.
I will try and assume.
Okay, so there's three of us that will be part of that, if you, I'll share your comments, if you'd be happy to carry those forward. I know, well, I'm sorry, it's regarding the common sale. Internal discussion, but if you want, different positions or thoughts from council to the rest of me. Yes.
Yeah, so I think last time, the last meeting I just mentioned, I think the Norfolk agreement, the dollar amount was contributing. Was more than what Common Sales was proposing, and then also they had like intention that crossed out, I mean, asking for participation, so I shared those on the last time, I just.
Got it, okay, appreciate you bringing those back up. And then looking forward to Dexter Days weekend, always a fun time. In the past. When we were in person, often council were walking and braying together, I don't know if there's any interest in doing that.
That's not a good idea. But thanks anyway.
All right, I'm not, I just thought I'd ask you to go and see that.
I wouldn't correct if you wouldn't invite me.
It could do, yeah, we've, we've, we've done it multiple ways, we've had, we've had kids, we've had. Sponsors, all the Muslim spouses, you guys go do that, you're nuts, but, but we, we've walked. Anyway, if there's interest in that, I would reach out to somebody at Dexter Days and find a spot to meet and. Show some nudity on things, and, yeah. Actually, we do have a banner. We actually do have a banner.
I'm not gonna lie, I love a parade. It's a weird quirk, but like, I really love the parade.
It's ten o'clock on Saturday, and it.
My kids would love it.
Might be a fun thing to do. Bring your kids.
Are we gonna get much candy walking again?
Well, probably not, okay, but.
They can throw up the candy.
Well, I just think it, I just think it's, I mean, with, with certain things we have coming up, I think it's good that we're showing support for each other. Let me know, I, I'm happy to call.
At this point, I would just.
So, so I, I, I haven't seen the banner, do you, does staff have the banner?
No, maybe we just have a decal that goes on a. Car or something, I thought we had, it was upstairs at one time, might, it might be, it might be metal.
I think there's a magnet or something.
Magnet, maybe it's a magnet.
Did, did it say the village council?
I don't know.
I think it just said City of Dexter.
So, so, so I mean, we, we, we do have a decal that says City of Dexter.
That's, that's.
It can be for a magnet, but.
Well, we could do yourself, yeah. You could drive, yeah, you could, there you go. Insurance covered on our insurance. With kids and people all over, right?
Not me, it's Osho's driver, I'm saying, excuse me.
Okay, I'll, I'll, let me know if you can't make it, I don't think it's a good idea, but I'll try to reach out, I don't know. Does anybody have any questions for me? You have comments on that, again, on the free app, I'm gonna be at the free app for that. There's thoughts, anyway, I'll keep the meeting moving, are there any council reports? It weren't exactly in the packet, but, okay, we're down to consent agenda, there are two items.
I know, we approved the two items listed on the consent agenda, bills and payment in amount of three hundred fifty eight thousand, six hundred and fifty six dollars in place of the cents and the appointment of their card to the DVA. That's second.
Motion by Fisher, second by Sinamul. Now, please, now the vote to approve the two items on the consent agenda.
Hubbard, yes, Griffin, yes, Michelle.
Stan.
Fisher, yes, Aura, yes, Kyo.
Yes. And you, okay, we are down, we have no unfinished business, so we're down on a new business, item M one on page eighty-seven of the packet. Is a resolution to update the credit card use policy. Resolution update eighty-eight, it was over eighty-nine.
It's a reservation. We're moving for the reservation, Jeff, they the City of Dexter procurement credit card use policy.
Okay, motion by Fisher, is there a second?
Yes, and I wish to introduce our management intern, Ryan Bellis. Who worked on this, and I thought this would be a good opportunity to bring him in and give him the, the full council experience.
Welcome. Well, hello, hope everyone's still doing well tonight, I'm Ryan, I'm a team management intern, someone who's sure if anyone does know my dad as well. But, so I was tasked by Marie to kind of update the credit card policy that he's been using since nineteen ninety-six, which was. Kind of put in play after the state of Michigan adopted there, stands on that and allowed municipalities to make their own. So we haven't updated ours since then. So basically, it's just an overhaul, it keeps it in line with how we have been using the, the credit cards with S and staff, but it just makes it concrete in paper. So what I did is I just followed state guidelines, and then I researched and kind of surveyed what other cities were doing. I have a handful, but it was a lot more, I used the lister, that was available as well, I also just. Different cities, so I went to Ann Arbor, Chelsea, Fremont, Novi, Boylough, Essexville. And some other ones as well, to see how they were doing it, and ours, that I made from that was, was very similar. And then it has a couple of different parts with policy guidelines, and principles are pretty standard to what I just said there too. Same with the language and the jargon. It also includes a list of the authorized users and the uses for what can be used with. Who can use the credit card, there's a couple of internal control procedures that are in the package as well that belong to it. As well as the responsibilities of the card holder, and an agreement form, that was probably the biggest thing, that there was nothing that was. Kind of like that paper trail to have something assigned to when they check out the credit card and put it back, just that way that everything is. Set in stone, and you can find out who was using it, for how much everything is back, everything, so. Pretty standard. Within that, I don't really have too much besides that, I don't want to take up too much time, but if anyone does have any questions, or if Marie's here as well to kind of answer more.
Did our auditor ever, like, amend that difference? That all would use? I think it's fine. It is well of me, I don't have any questions or. Donna, you signed the last one, it was quicker than ninety-six, I see. Any questions for Ryan? All right, Justin, try not to use your credit card too much. Seeing that, I'll ask Miss Canada, hello, pretty good job, all right.
Thank you.
Aura, yes, Hubbard, yes, Griffin, yes, Michelle.
Yes.
Fisher, yes, Kyo.
Yes, motion curious, thank you again for your work on that. New decision of M two is consideration of a resolution to update the investment policy.
President's recommendation, we got part of the resolution, Jeff, they the City of Dexter, investment policy.
Motion by Fisher, is there a second? Excuse me? They're like blue and yellow channel. Yeah, sure, one second. Let's see, do you wanna share with us or talk to us, Ron?
Marie, put this together, thought that it'd be a good idea to take a look at it, there, there aren't a significant number of changes to. The body of policy, it's mostly the glossary and the addition of terms.
Ray, recommendation, here's somebody?
Marie?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Was, was, was the addition of, of the glossary a recommendation from someone or somewhere?
Yeah, from APT USC, it's the Association of Public Treasurers of the United States and Canada. I look at the investment policy every year just to, you know, make sure it's still matching with everything. And then I realized when we did the overhaul before we hired Meter Inn, Meter Investments. I never resubmitted that for certification, and I probably should have at that time, so if you pass this, I'm gonna submit, submit it for rec, recertification.
Questions for Marie? Okay, so no questions, Miss Pam, please call up.
Aura, yes, Michelle.
Yes.
Hubbard, yes, Fisher, yes, Griffin, yes, Kyo.
Yes. If you're curious.
Thank you.
You, okay, there's a decision of M three, a resolution submitting bottom proposal for fire station. Is there someone who would like to make a motion, or do we want to continue the discussion?
Yeah, I at least want to motion to include the. I guess any of the, all information in this packet in our supplemental. I just want to motion that that be included in our consideration and conversations tonight, I don't start.
So motion to include.
Mr. Seneferi made the point that if there is something that shows up that's not. Oh, maybe that's a five, yes, you shall not consider it, so. I at least want it to be on the table for us to.
Thank you, I just really wouldn't have known this, you know, Chris, and you're a week.
All right, so most of the attributed, what was the important information in today's discussion?
Right.
Okay, you want to discuss that first? We sort of have been discussing it, at least it's worth it.
We've been kind of acknowledging supplemental as part of the doctrine in this too. This is, this is building suspenders.
I'm just trying to make a crystal player that we're permitted to.
Yeah.
And maybe there's some other way we need to handle that in the future. I just get the point that how to do this is that we don't want, you know, but I think a workaround is that, say we don't all agree to it, I think. That would be within his right to just read this aloud. And ask for that, you know, and then it would be part of our consideration, so, yeah. Maybe something in the world needs changing, this is the way we do it, like, it is.
So definitely, well, that, I hope that the city will want to take another little rule to. Prevent supplemental or. Do you, do you want supplemental?
Yeah, well, so, we're gonna have to resent the rules after the city, the council, so probably add the list.
It seems that how we've been operating, I guess, I agree. Well, I think for supplemental that is. You know, if we send questions and then there's answers to those questions, it's, it's kind of different than. Putting something that. Potentially the goal of it is to be a consideration for a book, I think that's a very different. Thing than just, you know, oh, I have some questions about things on the packet, and can you give me more information on that? Now, if, if we are all gonna here and there. Refer to that as conversation, I think we just. Know it might just make it easier to say, you know, to both that it is okay to have it as part of the conversation. What also seems different too was the original tent that took a separate line item, like somebody's trying to add a separate consideration item. Versus information to aid in the discussion of existing.
Versus information to aid in the discussion of existing consideration item. It's not like what was submitted here is I want new business items and for.
No, but that's a third option. If we are considering things, you know, there there were two proposals in the packet and then. This is seems to be a third proposal or consideration. So it beyond just, oh, let me just add some information because somebody asked questions during here. I'm responding to it.
I guess it's not as far as proposed it. It doesn't really exist. Like it's not like somebody came in and said, I want to add a new consideration item to go on this.
It's it's related to the item we're talking about.
Yeah, great. So I guess.
And at the same time, if I don't get this until. An hour before the meeting, I don't have time. To do much with it. I mean, maybe read it, maybe, but I don't really have time to think about it, how it affects. My, you know, thoughts on the subject. So I I think there's a. It's not black and white.
Karen?
Yeah, I think the same could be said that any staff submits to it's more of an answer to a question. I mean, they have a we. A good draft of minutes, for example, and I guess they have to look back at all of their stuff. But. It seems to me they're likely have been timed. I mean, even in here, their updated resolutions that we all just got early today.
That's maybe a problem. I mean.
I mean, so I'm just saying, I think that if that's a concern, I think it should be concerned regardless of who submitted it to the supplemental. Oh, I'm sorry.
But it's not about who's submitting it. It's about the function of it. It's, you know, these answers to the questions, these are, these aren't consideration items. So this is adding information to a consideration item that I have to take a vote on. The rest of this is not.
The minute?
Okay, it's the minute. So, I mean. That's easier to digest and read through the accuracy than something that needs time for, you know, someone to think about it. And can, you know, actually consider it.
The the only time. Only time I have ever been frustrated by. The non five P M rule. Is when there wasn't anything on the agenda. And something was placed on the agenda. Not related to anything else there. Brought up at the meeting and put on the agenda. And my my comment there was there was no opportunity for anybody to know. About the topic that was being discussed. In this case. I think you said it was clear intent. That we were going to consider a question on this topic and that. In likelihood that there could be some variety in what gets. Proposed. So I don't think it's. I don't think it's necessarily. Off topic. I think it's okay. But again, you know, if if we just had M one and M two. I wouldn't want any of these just submitted as part of a supplement on five o'clock before meeting as a consideration. Doesn't sense. That's that's how I want it.
And that tracks with the actual reading the law.
All right, I'm gonna call the vote. Which occurred as real. And stuff like we were working really well towards a question here, so. Pam, please call the motion to include supplemental information. Tonight's discussion consideration.
Michelle's.
Yes.
Griffin. Ahra, yeah. Hubbard, yeah. Fisher, yes. Kyo.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. So, you know, we pick up where we left off, so to speak, at seven oh three in the work session if you want. Although since we're in an open meeting, we can now. Make motions to the effect if we want to on the topic. Anyone who would like to make a motion?
I move. Do you approve a resolution to adopt your doctor's? I move to adopt the resolution on page seventeen of the supplemental. On supplemental. For the public safety facility is defined as the fire station, substation. For specificity, it is the resolution that outlines our guiding principles. It's the resolution that includes the opportunity statement. It's the resolution that specifically mentions the building of a new public safety facility. At. The south eastern corner of the entertainment, Ann Arbor Street, in Metabee Court. It specifically mentions borrowing money in an aggregate amount of ten million, nine hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, I think those are, it's defined characteristics.
Hey, is there a second? Second. I'm looking at my reference second by Charles. So now we have a motion on the table. Thank you. Okay, discussion. Karen?
Yes, I just wanted to maybe keep up a few points. I like that it included. The guiding principles. I like that it included the opportunity statement. I mentioned in the work session, I'm in favor of building. And specifying the building of a facility at the. Metabee location. I am open to. Discussion on any part of this, but I do want to say, even though I, you know, motion to approve this value of ten point nine million, I. I'm open to modifying that number. And it seems like there are other aspects of this that might be some tweaks. So it. You know, I I would be in favor of some. Resolution that includes those elements.
So. Is the intent of your motion to include the feels like it should be as aware as?
No, so that's why I was trying to clarify just now that they are asking for this that still need to be. So it's not a. You know, requires words, I guess. I think I I so. I would go back to the different existing resolution that's in a packet and see is that a similar item and. If so, then I would just take that existing one.
What are just what things are in brackets if it's intended to be an editorial note? Not part of the actual text of the document.
I want to hear that. Questions on this? I have a few. I. I haven't, just reading this now, but I didn't see this completely before I got here. I like including. The. Those objectives. That we. Gathered together are principles, guiding principles, guiding principles. I like including those seven. I have not checked to see that they're all here. Or that they're word for word. To just to do that, but I think that we should state that those are our guiding principles. I do think there's also. Including the opportunity statement. And we have been cruising along for the last five months. With the idea that there are potentially two options to solve this problem. And we have not chosen one. And this indicates.
Yes.
We do not. We do not.
I never heard of that.
But now, passing this would make that determination. Passing that would make that. I went to part with that. Talks about. Our intent to use up to one million. I also think that there could be thought or consideration for growing that number. In year to year, when we have the opportunity to. Advance that, but I don't know how to put that into something yet because we're not limited to what we have today. We have, in theory. The next twenty years to also contribute to that that we. Play out, just a thought. I think that the whereas on the intends to secure additional county state federal funding. Think it's a great statement, but I don't know. It's one that we can. I I know it tends means you want to try, but I think it needs to be words a little differently to say. Tends to.
No pursuit.
Pursue, pursue instead of secure because there's no, there's no direct promise we can make. On what we just up front we secure. One of the, one of the questions I was going to make or suggestions I was going to make. To the larger whereas that on the second page, I'm on page eighteen there, the fourth whereas. Whereas council was determined that it's necessary for the health, safety and welfare of the city, its residents, property owners and firefighters. That the city invests in. I want the next sentence or suggested in that sense to say in the. Acquisition, design. Comma renovation and or construction. Of public safety facility improvements. The reason I think that's important, and we haven't decided yet, is. We may go full, full trust forward or to say we decide. That we want to build everything. On, and I'm going to talk about the number. Let's say we want to build everything on on metal view to spread the federal. And we go out for bid. And we have to cut. And the thing that ends up getting cut might be the sheriff's department. Well, in theory, you could cut that out of that. And then as we. Grow over time to pay. For those. Either because we get growth from the community or we could decide that we want to renovate the existing sheriff's station. With the dollars, the bond money. And renovate gives us the flexibility to do that for both, both services. But I think it's important. That's in that position, design. County renovation and construction of our public safety facilities. The the the, I'm assuming the word acquisition, Justin, you have helped here. I assume the word acquisition is in here because. We want to be able to pay ourselves back for the property that we bought.
We give ourselves that responsibility to.
Right, and we gave ourselves that flexibility. So we want to maintain it in this resolution, right? That's why that word is there? Okay, so we we also want to be able to pay for the design potentially, right? Out of these funds, if we should choose to do so.
I think so.
So that's why I suggested design. And then if if the decision was made to construct new on one thing and renovate the other, we'd want the ability to renovate. That's my logic for why those four words should go in and in or. And then again, and I I don't think we should be specific about the location or that we've determined it's the most cost effective solution because that is. Not a true statement. They were both found to be cost effective to the same level, depending on how you. Measure the improvements. And the only scenario we actually looked at was the extreme case. On both sites, meaning. The largest facility on both sites. We didn't look at anything. Bigger than what we have now, but smaller than what Sean signed, so to speak. Try to put Sean's image. And then I I. I personally think. The ten million, nine hundred thousand is. An awful lot of money to ask everybody wants to pay. It's. It's a lot more than I'm prepared to vote for. I I, you know, I I, again, I don't know why. Other bonds haven't passed and some or other mills have some passing, some haven't, but. It it just seems, that just seems like an awful lot of money and that we we could, we could solve so many things. That if you identified them wrong in our current station, whether we build new or renovate, we could solve so many of those. With much less than ten million, nine hundred lots of dollars. Especially if we're willing to take the advice of. Our interim chief and look to share opportunities for certain things and. If yes, there might be some sacrifices, but. I I I'd like to not have to ask for more than two minutes. I'm prepared to. That's kind of my level. I feel I love, like I said, it's really, we we could decide right now. Well, not right now. I guess we'd wait till next June to levy up to the. Up to our hill. Rollback amount. Which is adding another mill or at one point something. And then we'd only be asking the voters to approve a single mill. But I don't know if we want, you know, I don't know where everybody sits on that.
Yeah, well, my understanding is the challenge then is that the bonds would be fully backed by a village. And so we look at differently because there's not that secure funding because we may use our general fund for all our stuff. I propose, let's put the baby two and a half mills. And again, then this is the top. This is the top and the reason why I put the high end is because. I I don't want to do a project and we realize for short, we're going to have to come back and do some other funding. That seems disingenuous to ask people to fund it and then we pull money from other places. And I really doubt that the budget that puts the eight to ten percent escalation. Is going to be accurate. I just pulled a hand up from the fire station design conference and I can confirm that there were two years. During great recession when the costs went down by fifteen and sixteen percent. Every other year it's been higher. They were anticipating thirty three percent this year. It's not going to be that high, but it's going to be higher than eight to ten. And and one last thing, I always like when I'm able to get hands up because of something I say.
Sure.
We have to ask for the top. We can't ask for two and then say we want two and a half from this to support. That's it for them. That you, so.
Yeah, um. I. I see your point of asking for the top to be able to cover everything. I see your point of asking for the top to be able to cover everything, but in that, what is. Our commitment to our residents that we are doing all our best to. To be good stores of the money and ask appropriately, because there is a part that then if we hit that. Top is like, okay, have you tried to find all the ways to get, get money for that? To me, that's a lot of ask. And yes, we are going, unless you can guarantee that we are not hitting that top. You're basically asking people that this is what we are asking. This is what you're making. Um, so. I think based on the one million that we can put aside, aspiring to pursue other federal funding. Looking at the plans and see where we can, based on our needs. Reduce costs and on that, I, I would not support more than two mil. I think that's, to me, that's. Being a good store, asking for what is appropriate and trying to find, and doing our best to put with the rest of it.
Number?
Exactly.
What?
Couple of things. I, correct me if I'm wrong, but at one of our previous workstation or block stations, work sessions. David Gasson was in there saying that what we were asking for was kind of going added a little backwards, and he is used to presenting proposals. We give him the budget and he presents what we can get for that budget. I think he said that more than once. So. I don't think we need to over ask. I mean, I don't, I don't, that's not the budget I'm comfortable with, uncomfortable to as well. I also think we run the risk if we ask for almost $11 million of shooting ourselves in the foot and having this thing go down, because it's just. It's a lot of money. And it's, you know, well informed as we may be on all of this and what that gets us and what that, you know, what less gets us. When you've got a voter in the booth, I mean. It's just, it's a big number. And I know, I mean, I'm not calling our, our citizens uninformed or, you know, not intelligent. It's just psychologically. My gut tells me that. It's not, it doesn't benefit us to put something over 10 million.
Sure.
Yep, I think I would define it to mill. I do want to say the point was raised earlier. In the work session about what the main station is, the interlocal agreement does say the center of operations and control with the department shall be in the Village of Dexter. As an additional point for defining what we're supposed to be providing for the interlocal agreement. And the point was also raised about the size of Reno township and their cost versus the size of us and our cost. And this is one I've raised multiple times before. But the DAF service area is comparable to those other municipalities like. Reno and Highland Township. But the difference, though, is that they were all under this, a single government body. And so that cost for their main station was spread out across all of the resident. So the problem here, like I said before, is not that what is being asked for the main station is so out of line of what other main stations are. What the problem is that our interlocal agreement says only the city of Dexter pays for it, and it actually doesn't even say that. It says the town to pay for the substation. Nowhere does it say only the city of Dexter pays for the main station. And.
Very true.
Were there some way, and maybe there is, that, like I said, we get cooperation from the town just pull together all of the new fire station costs. Including their station, figure out a way to divvy that all up. I don't know that they would be amenable to that, but that's what I think the problem is, not what is. You know, based on information I see, the problem is that what is being asked for in a main station is that the cost is disproportionately onto the Dexter. So I just wanted to restate that, because maybe some want to. And I think, you know, maybe it's sorry, I wondered it with two mils. I mean, maybe there is a way, and I mean, I don't know how this works with financing and paying for things, but. We were in pretty short order, even to find a million dollars. I don't know how often that's the case. I don't know how I feel about raising the mill rate, just like behind the scenes. To cover something. I don't know that I like how that feels.
Well, you talk about it for 10 months between now and then you did.
Right.
You could have had the time for people to pay what they think.
Right. You know, and maybe that's.
Right, it's no different than asking people to pay too, if you're choosing one of them yourselves.
Right, but yeah, I mean, that's just a bet, that's a better safety than asking for closer to three mils now. Maybe the better safety is, oh, if we need the money, there is a mechanism to do it. And I don't know, Justin, if you have a sense of how many consecutive years do you think we're going to be able to find a million dollars in the budget? What, where did we get that extra 600 for that immediate stabilization or what? Where did that come from?
I think accommodation, so immediate stabilization. Saff salaries that want to fill.
Right.
And then.
But only of the million, only a portion of that was this year. And some of it that we're talking about is in the general fund, unrestricted and restricted, and we're just talking about shifting it over.
Yeah, yeah.
480 was already there.
Yeah. Yeah, and there's, I mean, there's probably more there than the scrutinized.
It sounds lovely.
Yeah.
So the site acquisition thing, so we've already paid for that.
Why would we want to exclude the bond?
Yeah, why would we want, I mean, future dollars are more expensive than not. I mean, the residents will say you already used our money to buy that.
I think we're just trying to maintain flexibility, that's all. I don't know if there was any intent or if somebody's made a motion that that's what we'd have to do.
I mean, I guess I'd rather not be there unless there's a very good reason to be there. I just don't, I mean, for residents being careful enough attention, I think they might say, well, we already used our money to buy that. Now you want to use my future more expensive money. To pay that. I don't know what, what it would decrease.
I only bring it up because I'm reading it there. It's been there in our package for a long time. It was talked about, that's why I talk about it.
Yeah, no.
That's why it's there.
I'd be fine to write the name unless there's a reason not to.
And that could say, that could say that city invest in the design, power, renovation and or construction of existing facilities into. New public safety facilities. Something like that.
So then.
We've maintained, we've maintained that, that choice, I guess, throughout the entire process. So just so you know, that's why that's it.
Yeah.
It's to keep the option, right?
But is there a way if we did select the man sites that we wouldn't take that money?
So, so in order to repay, it has to be a resolution, resolution.
But we don't have to.
But we don't have to.
Zach? Or was it anyone?
So I suspect I've been extremely annoying the folks on this council on this topic. I want folks to know that I didn't come to my position quickly or lightly. It may have looked like it. And actually, when I moved to the city, this was not any of the spots where I imagined were a fire station. Sure. The city's been talking about it. I moved in, I read the papers, Dexter leader at the time or whatever it was. And a couple of the other spots that I thought of that we had investigated was next to Copeland, where the Lions Park is now, and where Lions are. As I did my research with my background, I eliminated them. It doesn't work functionally. It boxes us in and limits our options. And so when I was able to go through my process with my background and went through all the sites, we investigated how many, six, eight sites throughout this process. Once I determined that this, based on what I knew was the best spot. Yes, I was very anxious about it. You know, if we would have, if we would have built the structure two years ago. The cost estimate were 7.9 million dollars. Today, the same building, 11.9. Two years, it did go up $4 million, something $130,000 per month. Want to do the math in construction season. So I, it is anxious. For me, and I do apologize for that. It's just I've worked through my process. I used all the tools and all the levers, because this is the single biggest investment we're likely going to do when any of us are here on the council. I will say, I, the, just two mils won't be enough unless we bring a lot of other money to the table. And I say that because fire station are very particular buildings that there are elements that are really difficult to add up. So we, we have a hybrid fire department. We've got on call folks and we have people who are in the building 24 hours a day. Because of that, the design has spaces on the far side of the bays for equipment, for turnout, for decontamination, to keep it away from where people are living. And so that when the volunteers come, they can walk across four feet, sidewalk, in a door, put their gear on, and they're in the bay. If we were a full-time service, that stuff could be on the one side, and we could do three bays now and just keep adding bays on the side. But when you put that end of the building there, it becomes really expensive and challenging with this logistically to add on more bays in the future. And I, I like to pay a lot less myself. One of the things that I even reminded from my youth. I did grow up very poor. My mom actually started a daycare center because she couldn't afford to put my sister and I in daycare while she was teaching at CMU. So we had it in our house, which is great because we had a bunch of toys in the house, but it also sucks. We had to share a house with a bunch of other kids. One of her side jobs was working at Kmart. She would buy, anyone remember Kmart had the old white tennis shoes that had the. Plastic thing between them. It was five bucks. And because that's all that she could afford, that's all she did. And even as a eight or nine year old, I would put the $45 shoes in layaway. Get that, and then they're going to last a year. The ones that she was getting from, you know, from the Kmart brand would last a month. And then you'd have to buy another one, and then another one. Or the option she went was it just falls apart and you destroy your knees and your ankles and you pay for it in another way. There's an opportunity cost every decision. If we, if we go too small, it's great for us because we're going to be paying less, but there's going to be much bigger costs on the backend. Again, I, I hear from the council, who's in charge of the schools, always ask for what you think you might need. Don't come back later and ask for more. Ask for what you think you need. I think two, two mils to support it is way too low unless we're going to fall below, but I'd be comfortable. Dropping it to two and a half. Sorry.
So two things. First, I appreciate your clarification on the points that you liked about this. Though there was a moment that was, you know, in terms of the, the cost that. Based on the previous conversations here that I was a bit confused, so I appreciate that clarification. Um. That you are very passionate about this topic and that shows. And to me, that's a great asset to have as part of this conversation. One of the things that I appreciate about this council is the ability of us to have conversations that difficult and constructive conversations. Even when we don't make reading on some things, and I appreciate that. Um. Chief Smith, as you mentioned, he built many fire stations. And one of the things he was sharing with us was a video of the station that did things in phases. And that the possibility of that is there. In the drawing we have right now, yes, that might. Be difficult to put the base, but for those who have built fire stations. As. They have done this. I'm sure you know that they have done additions to what they have had. I don't want to put the burden on the future generation, but we also want to be cognizant of now. And also cognizant of needs. If you can, or anybody can guarantee that we exactly need that much in the future and in the 20, 30 years. We might not need that. We might be able to have that, or if we might, if we haven't. We might be able to expand if the design is done accordingly. Whether it's the new site or, or the previous site. So to me, asking. For, if I was on the council last time that this was, as you said, $4 million cheaper, I would still would ask the same sort of question. That is that the 7 million is still a. Good amount to put at front of it. So to me, that, that is not. That has not changed, just because now we have 11 million versus 7 million. So in that, I think, again, going back to me, it's, it's. Two mil will give us 8.4. We have another million, that's 9 million. And if we look at savings within the designs that would bring us to that amount. Or if you're looking for additional funding at other places, that maybe that helps. In, in that case, I think we have an ask that shows. Really our due diligence and understanding of the financial circumstances of today. As well as trying to, to meet our needs. And I, I do like having the guiding principle and opportunity statement and all of that in here. Um, and one last thing, I. Don't know if, um. No, I'm. Still wondering about the. The location being there or, or not. And I would like more conversation on that. But I do like the wording for design, renovation and construction. Because if we decide, you know, as Sean said, if we decide to go into something, we do the new place and we want to keep the sheriff's department where they are. And we want to allocate for that public safety. We want to be able to have that language there.
Zach? I'm going to off all of any amendments which I would accept if. It's going to make your accepts. So on page 18 of 20. Having new paragraph under the second one. That we read, whereas the city, as opportunity allows, and we'll repeat this, can contribute additional funds from the general fund. To reduce the necessary mileage to support bond payments. That'd be the second paragraph on that one, because whereas the city, as opportunity allows, can contribute additional funds from the general funds to reduce. The necessary mileage to support bond payments. In the current second paragraph on that page. Change from the city intends to secure. What was your procure, pursue, pursue? Change secure to pursue. In the big paragraph, so when I usually write resolution, plan, equation, I would, I put numbers on front of it so you can look at it, but the big. In the big paragraph, so when I usually write resolution, planning permission, I would, I put numbers on front of it so you can look at it, but the big chunky one there. Um. To do that the city invest in the acquisition, design, added, and construction. Let's see. The monetary amount placed on ten thousand nine hundred with ten million five hundred twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars. And the brackets on page four and five are stripped and this, they're just editor notes. Like, that's why I often describe this. Did everybody follow almost each one? Cause he's offering those game of views since you.
Sure.
So that's, that's the motion I was posting. Please to talk to. Intense everybody?
What's that figure?
Ten million five twenty-nine eight sixty-three. It's, it's essentially for the audience.
Is the two point five?
It's a two point five million dollars.
Okay, I'm not. So my concern for that language of opportu- opportunity, or when opportunity arises, allow, allow contribution from the general fund, is that that puts us and the staff in a bad position with residents, if we are not able to do that for circumstances that comes. Because at the end of the day, it becomes, you didn't do your best to, to raise that, if you can't do that. So, to me, still having that top is basically, however we wanna word it, is that at the end of the day, we could ask that top for people. And that doesn't sit well with me.
We'll have a special on this. Okay, so by call the vote, and it gets less than four votes. We're gonna have to have a motion.
Right, I think I can make a motion.
Yeah, I think I can make a motion, yeah. I mean, you know, on some version of, on basis of some version of what's in the packet, and then these motions are not complete, right? They're in the packet, it has links and stuff in it, so it's.
Is there something that, like, if you were, how do you original something, to think that you can, is there some arbitral thing?
You can't make the exact same, you can change it. So it's sixty-three dollars, technically sixty-two dollars would be a new motion. Well, I just sort of, you know, I'd like to see the order I read in there, and the, the dollar figure is higher than I want to know, but I like some of that provisions as well, when we appreciate those.
I think, I think I'm inclined to vote now, because I think that's too much. I'm fine putting it to a vote, and I think.
If we, I mean, this, we let the, oh, no, we're rash, we're party, so. There's not more discussion, I'll call the vote, the question. Alright, so, yeah, I'm gonna ask you to call the vote. We are voting on a friendly amended motion that has the basis, this pages seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. I didn't spend much time, I'm sorry, on the back page twenty, but that also would have to be updated with the number of a ten million five twenty-nine eight sixty-three, or, or at first glance. Um, and then the, with a corresponding change to the mill, which would be there also to match that, which is technically the two and a half, if, if we're being thorough on what we're voting on here, okay, and then there's a friendly amendment to add a paragraph about the city can contribute additional dollars of funds towards either using the mileage or paying the bond payment. In the second, whereas there, James, the words secure to pursue. In the fourth, then it just writes acquisition, design, and construction, considering your designs as well, which approach. Strike from the, um. The, the all cap stuff in four and five at the bottom, at the top, big nineteen. We have all those. So, I just wanna go. Next, let's call the vote.
Fisher, no. Michelle?
Yes.
Huber, no. Brooke, no. Or Rob, no. Hugh?
No. Okay, so that motion does not pass. Seems like most people didn't vote for it because of cost. It's somewhere to start for something to develop out there.
I'll make a motion, starting with the same resolution, you know, page seventeen. I'll realize what I think were the amendments, so in that second, we're at on page eighteen, should we have to pursue? I also want to keep the fourth, whereas I don't want renovation there, so my, my, I think, including that's an acquisition, construction. I would change six, whereas, to be not to exceed eight million four point twenty-three thousand eight hundred ninety dollars, which is the two mil. Striking also the brackets on page nineteen. And then updating the word on the last page. Eight million four twenty-three eight ninety, and that'd be the one out there to be too. So my intent, I think what I did was everything is the same as the previous motion, but just updating the dollar and then.
Okay, you did add the paragraph that you did, whereas about the considerable, consider, right? I didn't hear you mention that, but I wasn't sure if you did.
Yeah, that's gonna be a problem for people I find that get off, although that would be my intent. I'm not happy to not concern us from doing it.
Whereas the city, as opportunity allows, can contribute additional funds from the general fund to reduce the necessary mileage to support bond payments. It's not an obligation, it's just, hey, guys, we're, we're gonna try to.
I mean, yeah, so I would say we don't need to include it. I, I would think that that is what we are doing all.
That's all.
Right, I heard you, but if you don't come, we did that now.
Okay, so this is still a site-specific proposal for another real endeavor. What was the lower? Okay, so is there, wait, is there a second for that? Okay, motion. Phil's last, sir.
I made one to second, I have one question. Uh, I, I don't want to remove renovation. If DCS comes in here and says, you need this quarter, that's a plan, you do it not. So I don't wanna take that out of there, without it, if it was, I would say a new motion, but I don't want to get taken out.
Right, so renovation wasn't in there originally, so a question for that, I guess.
Okay, I think it's important, because that's an option that may come up, and this thing is so we're all here trying to figure this and figure that, and there's this over here, so I don't want to take it out.
Yes, what if renovation is only to, to this facility?
I mean, like, for, for what I see, if, for example, something goes, that, the reason I don't like it limited is that it limits us. If we are talking, you know, if you are putting emotions site-specific, then there is a difference in the work renovation there than there is in general, but I think to me is that if something is built but needs some work for some reason, do we say that we can't use that money for, for that anymore because the one renovation is not there? No, it's, it just allows us a flexibility that is needed for any site, any project. It, it just allows a level of flexibility is. And I think that's helpful to have. I would be fine having renovation, but my preference is to want it into the station. So if, um, for example, a corner of the, an new building or gets, is built, and in two years there is a problem there and requires renovation, we can't fix it, because the, it is specifically the police station. And how that would be driven, I think? Or is that all part of the no, if it is, construction is done, two years later, if a issue comes up, you have to renovate the, the corner of the building. If there is money available, can you do it, or because it is only for police station, you don't wanna? That's the limitation that can happen.
In that case, I suspect that two years later, we won't have any on pot sitting around. So we have to come up in general funds.
I, I agree with this, I need to improve flexibility, because we don't know what's gonna come up.
We just don't know, we haven't even sought that an option.
But that's what we're trying to do tonight, and so if people aren't ready to do that, that's what the vote means.
Right.
So if you're saying we haven't selected it, that's what we're trying, or some people are hesitant to do that.
Yeah, right, right, I know.
So by the end of the meeting, you know, votes that you've not selected it, then I guess we can say that we're out of meeting.
So, where, where are you in your, in your motion? Is, is your renovation in there, or is it only for police stations, is that what?
I'll add, yeah, renovation, yeah. I, I mean, it's not gonna go nowhere.
Well, just kind of, procedurally, keep going, I didn't, I mean, your motion needs a second, I don't know that I have one yet, so.
Right.
If you're not finished doing it, I wanna help you get the motion on the table.
Right, there's a, renovation is fine, and I don't also, I don't have a, you're gonna take each station to it, just your flexibility, and that's where your other votes are over here, so.
And, and you want the, so renovations, you're okay putting the word renovation, well.
She just said it's not going anywhere. Renovation for, limited to the Shacksup station, no, I don't, I don't wanna limit it, yeah.
So I'm not the right person to be the second, sorry, yeah. Um. Is there anything I can use as a question?
Sure.
Um, when Zach, um, did his motion, the revised motion for the two point five, recall, they're being supported, I know we voted, so I must have missed it.
No, it was a summary, I mean.
Oh, I did, yeah, oh, oh, thank you.
Yeah, you're trying to amend it to her original motion. So we, we just accepted the friendly amendments as if they were the first motion.
I will throw in that renovate not use specific, in the acquisition, design, construction, and renovation.
A new, or, or a public
of, of.
safety facilities.
To move space for.
And then are you gonna keep the?
I would do everything else.
Okay, so you're gonna keep the city purpose property at South District Section with the purpose of disrupting the new station, so at that event? You're keeping, whereas council, consultation, says everything to term that a public poll.
Yeah.
If you say it's out there, is it a cost factor decision? All right, is there a second for that?
Can you read me what the last, what you just wrote?
Well, so she was proposed to change the word secure to pursue.
Yep.
She has proposed in the large pariah that it says acquisition, design, construction, and renovation, or and or renovation, right? And or?
Okay, right, okay.
Okay, so that there's, you know, any, any of those four things. She has changed the amount to net the two mil option, which is the, the dollar amount of eight million four hundred twenty-three thousand eight hundred ninety dollars, as predicted by.
I see, yeah, okay, no good.
Um, she has struck, as Zach had, the bold words on four and five on top, page nineteen.
Yes.
And then on the actual bond language, she's changed the two amounts to net, both the mills to two and the amount to the eight four.
Okay, one second.
But she's kept the all other parts of this.
One second.
Great. All right, discussion on that motion.
Sorry. You with your.
Go ahead, well.
I know. If I'm going to support something that's site-specific like this, I cannot have that paragraph in there about us determining it as the most cost-effective solution, because I don't really it, we don't, that's, that's almost a pendant. I thought that was still in there.
She's got it.
Okay. So, I, I just, I'm not comfortable with that, I'll, I'll say that.
Can you not remember some of this?
It's the fifth, whereas on the top of page eighteen of those acts.
I thought they were changed before the very first thing we did.
No, it's not been taken out of anything.
Okay, I'm not gonna throw myself in. Cause we've not done anything, you know. One piece of information I'm looking to, I agree with Jennifer, support for that, one, uh, piece of information we have seen, I'm looking at, considering, is agreeing who seem comparing this like, and so why, any, any hassle costs message for those. So, for example, indicating that appropriate parking is a negative at the main street site versus a positive at the main site. Easy apparatus maneuvering on and off site is a negative at the main street site, is a positive at the main site. Best practice guideline compliance is negative to the main street site, positive at the main site. Movement at the cost of shopping, for example, needing to accommodate a temporary service location. To me, that seems not cost-effective, um, renovating the main station and then moving people out for the interim. Things like that, in my mind, I think at least some of those, no, it's not, most of them can be interpreted as a statement about the cost effectiveness of that solution versus the other.
And if you look on page eighteen of the packet, there is cost apples to apples, except the main street renovation does not include a temporary facility. You add that conservative size half million, but it's more likely a million or more, because we need to have a big building that can do the fire truck, so you can put a half million. So just when you put the math in for comfortable, it is, there's a number that you can measure.
And I just don't agree with that. I think that there's too much flexibility in a lot of parts of this, and even what Jamie just said, could be interpreted as, I mean, that's, I think it's just, I, I'm not necessarily disagreeing with it, I just don't think it belongs there.
Well, the reason why I've drafted. Well, the reason why I drafted it in there is because the citizens of Dexter have been hearing for ten, twelve years, we can do it for cheaper. We can do it for cheap, we can do it for cheaper. And so part of this body, if it's wanting to make a statement of, we've done the diligence, we've looked at the numbers. This is the most cost effective. You have to tell that story to folks if you want them to vote yes, because again, they've been hearing for decades.
I mean, then go tell them that, but I, I mean, I just, I'm not comfortable with it.
I thought that's the cost estimate for the main station included. Allows for. I thought it's been in front of us and said that. I don't remember what the number was, but it's in there.
I remember as well that he put it within one of those with more general buckets. Despite that it was part of.
If I could add in here, Mr. Mayor. That, that number was included in the general conditions portion of the lower the trade cost, it just wasn't at that number. And it was in the two hundred thousand dollar reason, I remember we had that dialogue and. The number five hundred thousand was brought up from the council. But there is a portion that was included, just wasn't to the degree that council thought maybe it should have been.
So if I may ask, I'm looking at page twenty, twenty-one of the workshop. It shows general contract conditions for the map site at seven hundred fourteen thousand dollars. And for Main Street, it only has it seven hundred forty thousand dollars, so that's thirty-six thousand dollars. As I read difference for a temporary facility for two years. I don't see where it's in there.
Yeah, the. I'm not sure my salon, yes, I am. I wouldn't look at the. Dollar amount there, I would look at the percentage amounts and that would be a difference. I get that dollars is a way to measure it, but it was included via percentage difference. I go back to that, let me see if I could find that real quickly. Should have been in the half, half plus percentage range.
So I was clarifying what Jamie's motion was, and I don't think we have a second. Right, we're done, you do your second? Then we don't have a motion on the table. Motion's there, relax, go.
Okay.
Come to comments, sir.
Excuse me, no, I'm gonna make a motion because I don't want to leave this meeting without asking the board something. I mean, we've talked about this for long enough. We need to ask them something and see what they say and go from there. So I would move that we take the motion that was just on the table, remove the paragraph that I. Was not wanting in there, so that would be the. Bit whereas on page eighteen of the supplement. That's it.
Okay, so we need to repeat that. So that's got. No changes to page seventeen. I have no changes to page seventeen. At the top of eighteen, changing secure to pursue. And fourth, whereas it would have acquisition, common design, common renovation, and/or construction. A D R and C. Strike the word new, take construction of public safety facilities. Delete the next whereas, which is the consultation city architect to determine that the. Those safety facilities, how this corner is most prospective. In the, in the whereas, where it talks about the amount, it would be the. Eight million four twenty-three, eight ninety associated with two mils. The bold words are struck on the top of page nineteen. And on the last page of twenty, again, ten, ten million nine hundred thousand would be eight million four hundred twenty-three change. Two point five eight would be two. Are we changing the words? Or changing the words there in that bond language? It says with purpose of paying the cost of acquiring construction, or is that here, is this language now need to match? You know, the actual ballot language was on page twenty. We've been playing with the language in the resolution, but it should match.
Yeah, yeah.
The A D R and C. Are we taking out? Where, here? To match the. And this is, this is essentially matching that whereas, is that correct? The ball people whereas on page eighteen. This needs to say for the purpose of paying the cost of acquiring, designing, renovating, and/or constructing. Public safety facilities. In the city of Dexter, to include special fire station, police station. Did I follow what I was saying?
Yes.
Was that?
No, sorry.
All right, well.
So there is no location on the ballot language, there's page twenty, yeah, I'm looking at page twenty. It talks about that specifically, okay, so presumably we don't want that to be called out. But that's not what I said.
I know, I'm asking, sorry, so you want the resolution we're passing. To be general, but the valid language is just says it?
No, the resolution on page seventeen, doesn't it say that on here? So.
It says, that is a statement of fact that we purchased property there. But the ballot language that is gonna be on the bond proposal is on page twenty. It's on page twenty, and I think it needs to match the whereas that you made in the resolution. Where you, where you, at the top, where we say acquisition, design, renovation, and construction. But there's not a location in that paragraph.
Now I see. So, yeah, I guess, yeah.
Take a minute and think about it, and I'm just trying to make sure we understand what I'm voting on.
So it over time because of what I said earlier, which is. If we don't go site specific here. What's the same, we're just, I mean, how? Are we just gonna be arguing on the other side of this with a fund of money? My point was, I don't want, and taking this out, I'm sorry, Donna, if I wasn't clear.
I can, I will withdraw my second, and I will not make another.
That's it, go second. So you just want a cost effective solution out, but you wouldn't be okay with the bond language saying that we will be building new one acts, whether we. I'm not okay with saying that we'd be putting the fire station and the police station there. Because I want to leave open possibility, the flexibility of having. That, the. Police station, see where it is.
And I'm suggesting that the best way to do that is to remain flexible and not commit to a spot for anything. Because then when, when the architect does a design to this amount. You're gonna know what's gonna fit when the bid comes in. And then you can make the decision.
Yeah, fine, yeah, I'll leave now, yes, so I would like the page twenty to match. Whatever, what were you saying?
The fourth words.
On page eighteen, or?
Yeah, the fourth whereas.
Yes, I'm fine with that. That's.
So just, again, to be clear, what we're talking about is in the second whereas on page eighteen. Change the word secure to pursue. Or pursue additional kind of state federal plan. In the fourth, whereas. It's that the city invest in acquisition, design, renovation, and/or construction. Of public safety facilities. To include space for our fire station and police station. Spaces for fire station, police station. Strike the next whereas, which is the one in consultation with the city's architect. Change the bond amounts. Eight point five, three point four, two, three, eight ninety. Strike the brackets. In four and five, it'll have it on page nineteen. Change all references for mileage from two point five, eight seventy-nine to two point oh. And delete in the bond proposal language. Paying the cost or delete the reference to. Well, if you just say acquiring, we have to add acquiring, designing, renovating, and/or constructing. Public safety facilities in the city. Strike from, from at city owned property, that southeast intersection area of Nettiveport. Strike from the word at to port. And get rid of the number of property number. That gives us the flexibility. Why does that, is that on that the motion you want to make?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Is there a second for that one?
That's what I was saying the last time I thought, so I'll try again.
Okay. Jamie.
Is there any way to get the actual bond or proposal in the Reno township? I've been searching, I don't know if I read on research in time on it, it's right now. It was at.
It, 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 it was out of my, uh, motion for.
So. If we put this up front of the voter and it passes. What that will sit on the other side of this with the files, honey, and I have this conversation.
With the new governor's council, so about twenty-four more were session.
So what will cost sixteen?
Thank you. If it doesn't pass. The only thing path that is left for us is that one mill that we could raise. Well, there are two paths, we do not need. Then the second one is that one mill that we can decide on. For the new council can decide on to do that. And that money is not enough either for a new building. Or a meaningful renovation in the current building. So we are basically shooting ourselves in the foot.
I don't think we've heard that. When, when has there's, when has somebody said that they can't take a meaningful renovation or? That the architect told us that he could design to a number.
Yes. If you asked him to decide two million, it came back with three point eight, it didn't, we have the functions and every space was compromised and meaningful land that affected the. The building and station that he's got.
It's really.
Look, there's also, there's also the, that we could still have a vote about an action between now and the election. If we kept working on it, that's what we're all just gonna consider it done and wait until November.
Zach, sorry, I have a question for Mr. Stewart. How much, how much does a tire on excavator cost the city?
I don't ask.
Yeah, yeah, if you had to replace a tire on an excavator, you ran over something, big mastine popped.
I have to give you a price on that, I'm not sure.
Thousand bucks, probably somewhere in that range. If we said here's seven hundred fifty bucks, you're gonna get an excavator tires, that kind of work. Sorry, that's a rhetorical, I think, I need it, that's right.
I'd make it work, but.
But it would be, if you used tire, it wouldn't be as good, it, it, it would be suspect.
You couldn't go to that.
Okay. I do have a question, I see the distinguished fellow from Webster Township here who, Webster Township, for those don't know. Went through the process of putting cash away every year. And my understanding is that that approach, it nearly got away from them and they, they just were able to pull it by the skin of their teeth. If you'd like to share that process and how challenging it was to do it on minimal savings. Or no? What? Well, I'm asking the chair if he would allow that. All questions go through the chair.
What is the question you want to answer?
If you.
I don't mind asking.
Yeah, so Miss, Miss.
They say for cash to Pedro.
Yeah, Mr. Rob suggested where one of the options is we do the one mill of our general operating fund that allows. To save up or do something, which is a similar approach to what Webster Township did, where they put a certain amount of money away every year with the idea that they'd have cash to pay. And so I think for this decision making process, it'd be useful to power your, if someone.
John is our area wide rep to D A F P. He represents the district, I'm sure that's why he's here. Yeah, that's right.
Yes.
Not just on behalf of Webster Township. Yes, why?
I want to withdraw my motion.
You are for why? I think it's a good motion.
Okay. I'll leave it.
I mean, council last, again, we're likely gonna be scrutinized at some point by somebody for any one of the motions that would have been passed today.
Yeah, I'm fine with leaving it, I'll leave it.
But I think there's a lot of positives to that motion. And that's what we're trying to create, is an opportunity for ourselves to improve the facility.
I'll leave it because I do like the point that we don't have to stop talking about this and we can still work on this between now and November. But yeah, like I said before, I want to ask him something. I just, we've gotta ask him something. They, they're begging us to ask them something.
I agree. Jamie and Zach.
So I did find the Reno township. Language and one reason I wanted to find it to see if they specify a location or not, my understanding of the details may be different, that they had already started on a traffic building. And this is the way it worked, it was some cost, but even in their bond, like the question, the valid question. It just says for the purpose of paying the cost of acquiring, constructing, furnishing, and providing a building on touch of land. To be operated as a fire department headquarters, facility, vehicles, and rest, and other capital equipment, because we're also figuring this here real quick. So. They did not specify a location. That's why I was trying to check, maybe that we want to have a front meeting.
And initiatives, hold on one point, when we're going through and looking at different locations and different.
When we're going through and looking at different locations and different, you know, fire plus sheriff, fire plus sheriff plus city, you know, and, and our bond also was providing a draft valid language for all of those different options, I don't think any of them included specified location in, in the valid proposal one.
Zach?
So I, I offer these words of caution, if we ask for money on the low end of the project and it fails, the only option is to ask for less money, which we know is not enough for the low end now, it's gonna be even less for the low end in the future. And what I've heard from most folks is make a decision, kind of tool. They want to know which plan that we have supposedly studied for years or decade. What, what our recommendation is.
Here?
I mean, I'm serious about modifying into a good version. That's what I feel like is the right thing to do. I don't know how you convince the other townships of that. Do you say, hey, we tried for two mils and we couldn't get it? If you want a functioning main station, come to the table. You know, I mean, I don't even necessarily feel good about two mils, I don't even know why I would personally vote on it. But I do agree, we need to ask the voters something. And with the information we have, with the circumstances in which we find ourselves, this seems reasonable. Surely compromise, that, you know, it's a tremendous compromise for a city, for a resident. This amount of money, you know, so if we have, if what the building entity needs to compromise for the, the area department, you know, and everybody has to compromise, but I mean, if we're in that situation where this doesn't pass, then I think we have to spend some serious time figuring out what other options are, if you don't put this whole clause on city. It does not say that.
Well, I think Doug mentioned it, you know, we could, you could build, you could build a, essentially a substation and then have a center of operations be next to the police station. You know, you divide it, and people might say, why do you have two spots around, but there's, there's options, and talking to the townships is also one, but it's not what we're gonna do between now and October sixteen. Collectively, collectively from, from the effort that Zach started. I was gonna ask if the, the whereas has had our guiding principles down exactly.
They're, they're adjusted to be consistent with the language they're estimating, but all the ones are there.
All right, as long as they're close enough to the guiding principles, that was the intent, I didn't want to change the guiding principles since we had those adopted, we worked hard on those. But you know, this has come to something that maybe we can actually get on the ballot and that's an accomplishment in and of itself. Yes.
So yeah, regarding what that language looks like in the bond proposal where we already did a specific location, if you look at page thirteen of the supplement. I mean, I guess there it does, constructing a new firehouse facility, but just as in the city, so I don't know if that is in our.
It is.
So in the city.
It is, yeah, public safety. Constructing public safety facilities in the city.
So then it seems like that's consistent with Reno township, I mean, they said on township land.
So okay, if I call a vote? This plan, this follow up? Go through?
The shells.
No.
Are, yes. Fisher, yes. Griffin, yes. Hover, yes. Heel.
Yes. Motion carries, start the one. I think all of you deserve a lot of credit. Everyone, for your thought and diligence on it's not an easy thing to do, hard to make motions. And, um, everybody contributed to it, so. With that, people should see all the money. Council comments? Adam, I want you to go first, if you would, please.
I'm, I'm happy we're able to get something out there. We see what the people say about it, and you think that's a compliment. So, thanks for, so working together, I haven't heard you do that.
Um, yeah, the same, I'm very happy that we are able to put something on, on the ballot. I would like to see us continue this conversation from now until November because I still stand that the more we have the conversation and work towards it, we show our residents that we are intending for something versus they give us the money and we might have a plan or we are leaving it to the next council to make a plan with the if you or yes or no, so I would like us to continue with the same level of attention that we did until tonight, from now until November.
Decision?
Yeah, I'm also pleased that the party's ready, I think what's most exciting thing is that I've never seen this drill, we're putting on the bound and compromise. And that's what I've been happening tonight, I'm pleased that we made that. I also want to mention, I'm just a little disappointed in Justin because he did not mention Josh or me with the efficiency of the testing on the election board. And that is a terrible job, and so we would like to be recognized.
And then, and they did a great job.
Thank you. Yes, Zach?
Actually, I am terribly disappointed. I understand the sentiments of not wanting to spend money, but I don't want to pay a lot for this mug where isn't a good force of action when not spending a lot for the mug where it does have consequences. I will campaign against it because I don't think it's gonna be adequate, we're gonna fall short of what we promised that we're gonna be able to do with it. And anyone who's in contact with us next week, I'm probably gonna be out of reach because I'm gonna be in the key round on my first vacation, more than four days long in over six years and connection is spotty there. But the hotel was, or the campground does have wifi, so I will be zooming in for a bit, trying to hide from my secret from another. That is it.
You'll be back for the next meeting, did you say? Do, do we go back to the last meeting or not?
Council meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I don't get that much vacation time.
Okay, I just wanted to try and do it, thank you. Here?
I am really excited about the prospect of being in Dexter today.
It's a fun thing.
So if, if you allow, I would have a fun event to end the, the break. So at the Rose Bowl parade, which is eight miles long in the sun with no shade and wearing three layers of wool, eight years old stage till you're done. No shade because it's palm trees, at the very end of it, so you woke up at four in the morning, get on the bus, and then you've got the, the game afterwards, you're not gonna get back to the hotel till midnight. After the parade, the thing they give you to feed is In-N-Out Burger and Dr. Pepper, which is normally great, but not after the march eight miles in a California summer. So when you see the band performing, you know that the poor kids have rollerblades. Thank you for that indulgence.
Thank you. Okay, we're back around in non-range participation. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Josh, anybody online that's? No answer, my hands are up, how about the audience tonight? Michelle? Yes, they did, yes, they did. Okay, I will see the motion for a German.
So.
Move by Fisher?
Of course.
All those in favor, so if I have to say I, please?
Hi.
Have a good night and a good weekend, everybody.